Due to COVID, space restrictions, and the limited capacity of passengers on buses. During, during the first year of COVID, was the first time we saw a major reduction in drivers from 114 drivers to 82 in Acuimat County. Currently, we have 77 drivers, with 33 of them doing double runs. And when I say double runs, I mean tiered runs. Because we are facing such a driver shortage, we have continued with tiered runs. So these ones that do the double runs, they transport our high school and middle school students, and then they drop them off at school, and then they go back and they pick up our elementary students and take them to school. Um, the high school start times for instruction at high school and middle school, um, basically is around 7:30, whereas elementary students begin their instructional day between 8:30 and 8:45. So I want to present you with some of the research before we begin our discussions. There is research which supports later school start times for middle and high school students. According to the American Academy of Sleep Medicine and the American Academy of Pediatrics, middle and high schools, school students should begin school no earlier than 8:30 a.m. Both organizations want to ensure students get adequate sleep so that they are alert and prepared to learn at school. Research further indicates that biology plays a large factor in the sleep cycles of children and adolescents. Around the beginning of puberty, most adolescents experience later sleep onset and wake times, also called phase delay. First time I heard that term. This phase delay can shift the body's internal clock back by up to two hours. As a result, the average teenager cannot fall asleep until around 11:00 p.m. and would do their best waking up at 8 o'clock or even later. So a later school start time helps to accommodate this biological need. Possible advantages of a later start time for middle and high school students include adequate sleep, increased school attendance, decreased tardiness, increased attentiveness, decreased daytime sleepiness, improved academic performance, improved mood, and improvementations to list a few. Possible challenges and barriers of a later start time for secondary students with an earlier start time for elementary students include oppositions from sports opponents and stakeholders, concerns from parents with younger siblings due to assisting with after-school childcare, limited extracurricular activities, sports scheduling, hours of daylight practice are limited, limited transportation for away games, limited opportunities for elementary students to be provided with after-school academic interventions to assist with the COVID learning gap. This is to list a few. So in April, we sent out a two-question survey. And what we asked basically in this survey is based on the research from the American Pediatrics Association and others, we, what would the families feel about us flipping the start times? So all of you are made with this survey that went out, and we sent it out in Spanish and Creole. So we got our calculations back. There were 390, 3,935 responses returned. Um, 2,020 were electronic votes, and 1,915 were paper votes. So option one on the survey, um, said that, let's leave things as they are. 73%, 73.9% said, leave things as they are. Option two said, let's flip it, and that the elementary kids come to school early and that the secondary kids come to school later. When we did this survey, we also, fact of when we were constructing it, we were looking at other times such as high school students not starting until 9 o'clock, or the secondary students not starting until 9, um, because the research also supports that. However, that would mean they wouldn't be out until between 4 and 4:30, and that would really impact their sports and other after-school activities. So then we went further with our data collection. Middle and high school administrators were asked to survey their students to find out what percentage of students were responsible for getting their younger siblings off the bus in the afternoons. The results were, at Arcadia High School, 60.3% said, no, they didn't have a problem with that. But 37, 39.7% said, yes, they did have that responsibility. At Chiquita High School, we had 24.4% said, yes, they had that responsibility. At Mandur High School, we had 40% of the kids surveyed said, yes, they had that responsibility. Arcadia Middle School, 48.2%, and Mandur Middle School, 42% said, yes. So this is some of the research, and this is some of the data that I have provided you with so that you, when you're coming out to speak or when you're thinking about this, you can, um, give us some valuable information based on how this will impact you. So this meeting is not a school board meeting. It is kind of a town hall, open forum. So it's informal, but, um, you did sign up. I just ask for three rules when you come out to speak. That you participate with intention. That means pay attention to what's the speakers are speaking about, and not have little sidebar conversations if necessary. Um, listen to what is said and ask questions to help you understand, therefore, a few. When it's your turn to speak, share what you think is, uh, what you think in a constructive manner. Number two, maintain a respectful space. Everyone deserves respect. They might, you might not agree with what they're saying. However, we don't want to boo them, or we don't want to, no, no, that's not right, or whatever. Just maintain, um, a form of respect, um, with everyone. And appreciate the diversity of the percept, the perspectives. Everyone does not in this world, and none of us have the same perspective when it comes to different situations. So just listen and, um, appreciate them. And, um, I thank you for coming out. And we're going to start with the first person to speak. Let me get over this.
I'm Ellen Blake. I'm coming to you tonight as an Acuimat County teacher of 32 years and a parent. As a teacher, I've seen both sides of going to school during the early and late times. I cannot vouch for the difference in times at elementary school. I taught 5th grade for 23 years, and the students arrived at school at 8:30 in the morning. We did have the after-school program that lasted until 4:30. I do feel that the after-school program is very beneficial for the elementary schools. However, if the school times were changed in order for the buses to drop off the elementary students and then go pick up the high school and middle school, I do not see that this is going to work. There are many times that some students in the elementary would have to be brought back to the school because no one is home. Therefore, that is going to hold the bus back from getting to the high school and middle school on time. I personally do not like the idea of the younger children waiting for the bus in the early mornings when it's still dark outside. I have taught in middle school now for nine years. I have, I have seen both early times, 7:30, and later times, 8:30. I honestly do not see much of a difference. I still have students that try to put their heads down and sleep and rest. I saw this when we started at 8:30 as well, and in the last, and I still see it now at 7:30. In the last several years since cell phones and the gaming, I do see an increase of tiredness. However, that is due to not going to bed at a reasonable hour, and that is not going to change just because we changed the time to a later start time. This just gives them the idea of, wow, now I can stay up a little later because I don't have to go to school as early. On the day that the survey was given, I, as a teacher, led a discussion with the class and explained what this was all about. I felt like they needed a little background on the situation before they answered the survey. I truly do not think that minimum research was going to change their minds. I explained that what I heard while listening to the school board meeting, because I do every Tuesday, when this discussion was taking place. The English teacher next, next door found this to be a great opportunity to review the pros and cons for both times. She said that they had great ideas on both sides. I can tell you that my class of 25 all wanted the time to stay the same. Some comments were, I don't like getting up early, but I like getting home early. Another comment was, I can still have practice and be home kind of early. As a parent, I have also seen both times in place. I'm going to be honest, I like the students getting out by 2:30. This year, my daughter, which is now in 7th grade, played sports. It was nice to be done by practice, be done with practice by 4, 4:30 instead of 5, 5:30. This gave us time to get home, have dinner, relax, instead of eating dinner, doing homework, studying ugly. It also gave my daughter that downtime which she needed, which was nice due to the fact, also she didn't miss instruction or have work to do when she got home. On the other hand, I had two sons that had graduated from Acuimat County Public Schools, and their practice didn't start until 3:45 and went until 5:30 or 6:00. By the time dinner and everything else was done, it didn't leave us much family time for any of us. In a perfect situation, I would like to see all schools going at the same time and on the same schedule. But with the bus driver situation, I don't see that happening anytime soon. I would like to say thank you for those that are trying to make the students more successful, but I truly don't think that changing the time of the school day is going to be the answer.
I'm sorry, I need to acknowledge two board members that are here tonight to join you, um, Mr. Malcolm White and Dr. Lisa Johnson. I just want to acknowledge them. Our board chair since when we got her something came up, so she's not able to be with us tonight. Um, Nicole Donnelly.
Dr. Hall, could I speak last, please?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
John Robinson.
Pretty. I see this way, he has done some work that I've done about, uh, these programs that we're trying to change. Also, there is a study out that, your electronic gadgets and TVs and stuff, you can be up one hour before your daytime because of the blue light. It interrupts your system. And if we don't do this, I don't care what time you change to send a kid to a school, you're going to have the same problem. Now, I know for a fact, it works. I asked my daughter, should come home with a hand? I took her cell phone for 60 days. That app became a deep punch. Said, y'all do laugh, but I was telling this, I probably need to take the toll of their kids. And if you don't, I see kids talking back to parents. I'm not going to do that. Oh, what would happen? We, we, we need to do, there is another survey act. I don't want to get into this, but about behavior, how the behavior has escalated over the last four or five years. And it's because a lot of these video games that they watch, take a look at what your kid's video game is playing. It's all about violence, shooting guns, and stabbing people, and all this kind of crazy stuff. We need to really pay attention to our kids. You look at the news, you see kids shooting kids. And this is guaranteed to be part of the reason why. So we really need to, if we want our kids to excel and do their best, we have to step up to the plate. And if we don't step up to the plate, then we're likely to lose it out. Thank you.
Karen Allen.
Good evening, everyone. I come tonight as a concerned citizen, a product of Acuimat County Public School Systems, as well as a parent of a student of the system, um, too. And, um, I thank Dr. Hall for providing us the context and the research that had been done upon which the board is deliberating. But I just wanted to share tonight about our communities, our children. Our statistics, they're our babies, regardless of what age they are, and we are all concerned about their well-being. Now, Mr. Robinson said, and I believe the first speaker also, spoke about the, um, bedtime for the high school students, our secondary school students. You know, we cannot, as much as we want to give a bedtime for older children, they do not always adhere to that bedtime. And making a later start time for the school, again, will seem like, okay, we got even a longer time before we have to turn off all the gadgets. So I do not see a later start time for the secondary schools as being helpful, as being impactful for the learning environment. And I believe because our babies, um, need as much learning or instruction time as possible, and because we do not have an abundance of school bus drivers, that we should stay with the schedule that we currently have. Thank you.
Chief O'Shea O'Callaghan.
Good evening to everyone here, and especially to the members of the board that took their time and made sure that they could attend and understand that this is a very important decision that has to be made and that decided that it was important to hear what the parents had to say, and any students that might attend as well. I also wanted to preface saying that many of my points have already been said, but I'll reiterate, so bear with me on that. Members of the board, I come before you this evening to address the proposed change at school to the start of the school times for students of Acuimat County. I come not only on behalf of my child and rising center at Arcadia High School, but for all of the students that attend our schools. My daughter, like many other high school students, actually prefers the current scheduling arrangement and says, leave it as it is. And I, for one, agree for the following reasons. The county school board website admission statement says, "His goal is to provide a safe, engaging, and student-centered environment where all students and learners are challenged, encouraged, and supported to maximize growth and prepare for future education, citizenship, and work." When reading the statement, the following things come to mind. Challenge, let us all challenge our young adults to start earlier, and that it may go a long way in building character and will prepare them for the real world. Many jobs on the shore start earlier and require its employees to rise early and to be to work on time, as well as many jobs in urban areas that require one to get up early to make sure that traffic is not the reason that they are tardy in arriving to work. Getting up early never killed any of us. In fact, it made us stronger. Perhaps it would help our youth to do the same. As far as safety is concerned, I feel it is a safety issue for elementary school students to have to wait at the bus before the sun rises and sometimes well after the sun sets in the fall and winter months. What about visibility issues? Child predators looking for easy targets? Not only to mention the loss of vital sleep time. I believe many people have stated about the different articles that go into the circumstances of what happens when a child doesn't get enough sleep. And from what I've read, it said that children that were elementary school age needed nine to 12 hours of school, excuse me, nine to 10, nine to 12 hours of sleep, while high school students need eight to 10 hours of sleep. And I believe that was the American Pediatric Society webpage. And, um, also, there was a link on the CDC webpage. When considering growth and engagement, let us think of how many high school students that have younger siblings, some of which many parents depend on them to get their younger siblings off the bus, feed them a meal or assist with homework until the parent can arrive home. As far as support, I think it is important to support our youth and our young adults and their endeavors to participate in sports and activities as well as work after school if they would like. In closing, I would like to take the time to thank you for your consideration in this matter. And I'm hoping that we can come to a good solution because as one parent states, in a perfect world, school would start the same time for everybody. But we all know that there's a crunch. We do not have enough bus drivers. Nobody's getting up early to go fight with these kids and get them from point A to point B. So we have to do what's best. But in my opinion, it does not make sense to put younger kids out very, very early when you have older kids that are already used to doing it, and they don't have to make the big change and shift and adjust. Thank you, Pretty Thomas.
Thank you. Donna Marshall.
Good evening. I don't have anything written because I wasn't sure what I was going to need to say. But, um, I've been driving a bus for 42 years, and I've driven elementary all but my first year. And I find that, as many of you said, putting the smaller kids out before daylight is an issue that is not a good thing for them because a lot of the parents aren't, don't put them on the bus. A lot of them get ready themselves. And then the high school kids, if they want to learn, I'm sorry to say, they're going to learn. That's, you know, and if they don't, but the time changes, and I don't feel it's going to help. Um, because as John said, if they don't go to bed early enough, you know, they're not, and if they are pushed back, then that time, extra time, they're going to say, oh, well, you know, I can do this. I can have a little bit more time to spend on the plane or whatever. So my feeling on this is, we leave it as it is. I think it will, you know, help both sides. I just don't feel like the earlier time for the, um, small kids is a good idea. Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the board has stopped public speaking, so please bear with me. I'm here tonight as a parent of an elementary school student, a middle school student, and the voice of parents that cannot be here tonight due to conflicting school events, um, and unable to speak. Um, keep in mind, research is only valuable if you're comparing same variables and methodology and the study and research. And some items can be open to interpretation and can be skewed due to inconsistency in the variables in our environment. Changing the, um, start time will cause some Acuimat County families logistic nightmare and domino effect in their work and home life. Um, here are some comments on the school start time later for middle and high schools. Number one, safety concerns. Um, children's safety, the younger siblings will be getting out of school and off the buses before the older siblings. Traditionally, most, um, older siblings are home for the younger ones to get home to ensure their safety and to assist with after-school. Um, traffic safety, there are a lot more traffic on the roads where the older kids will be leaving school later. I don't know what time you guys are proposing, but, um, if you're, the kids are out on the roads between 4:30 and 5:30, that's when majority of the workforce is letting out. Um, schedule adjustments, um, will affect both parents and children. As mentioned before, this will be a logistical nightmare and domino effect for families, especially our homes and work schedules. Parents, um, have to figure out yet again how to adjust their schedule, work schedules at, and home, um, to get support for the changing of hours. Um, schedules are changed to, have, have been changed at least twice since COVID. Um, and everyone, I, I personally haven't yet approval to have a work, a flexible work schedule. So it, it makes it difficult on parents, and not everyone's, um, able to get a flexible schedule. Um, and then children, based on their, uh, my personal experience, my younger daughter does not like to get up early. Um, and elementary children will have to go to bed earlier to leave for school earlier, reduce some quality of family time together after parents have gotten off work. And as far as high schoolers, um, with jobs, they will have to adjust their schedules. And a lot of times, seniors in high school plan to work their last year to earn, um, money for college expenses and to help out their families. So changing their schedule reduces the amount of money that they can earn and focus, um, on, it'll make them work later and be on the roads later at night and at more risk. Um, also, by changing their schedule, they're going to have to go back and change their schedule once they actually are in the work environment, um, because typically you don't start at 9 o'clock, um, 8:30, 9:00. And then, third one was sports. I know, um, some people are concerned about, um, if school starts later, practices will start later. Also, um, you'll see kids being pulled out of classrooms to go to sporting events, so their loss of learning, um, from multiple, like, leaving classrooms to attend sports events. Um, traditionally, the majority of the sports are held directly after school, but schedules, if schedules are shifted, that will increase the loss of class time for many students. Um, I know some people are concerned about traveling time. Sometimes it takes two to four hours to get to games, and that's just going to push it out even further. Um, and then financial burden on families. If families do not have a support system to help with the proposed new schedule, um, families will be forced to seek before and after care, which is going to cause a financial burden on families. With the rising cost of everything due to inflation, it's going to hurt Acuimat County families financially. For example, the standard school year is Shelby 78 instructional days, uh, which equivalent, is equivalent to 25.7 weeks. If families spend a minimum of $100 per week for before and after care, they will be spending roughly 2,571 per year, which could potentially impact a family's weekly groceries or ability to pay other bills or provide other essential family needs. Um, I just want, I hope that the school board considers all the impacts that will be placed on families if the schedule changes are implemented, and consider providing other alternatives or solutions to improve, uh, students' academics. Parents and students need to be accountable. Um, just because we're changing the time is not going to mean that it's going to improve, um, their testing or, uh, SOL scores. The school board should offer another town hall or an opportunity where parents can brainstorm together with the school board to offer up some potential solutions to improve the academics of our students. So thank you for your time.
Emily. Georgia Fordell.
I'm a parent of two middle schoolers, one rising to high school. Um, I didn't bring anything prepared tonight, so sorry. Just wanted to let you know what I feel of this. I really appreciate Dr. Hall's efforts in improving the success of our children and the information that she's given us. Um, I had spoke before on that first survey that we got and how we obtained that information. And I've got a little more information tonight about that 1,900 approximately, or electronic surveys. So can I, those were surveys then from teachers and students. Is that correct?
The, um, I'm sorry. Two, 2020 were electronic, and they were from middle and high school students.
Okay, and how many of yours?
And the 1,915 were paper ones, and they were from, um, grades three to five, 10 parents who sent it back in. So that's where we came with the 3,935 responses received.
2,200 were from students and teachers. We got approximately.
And the middle school. Well, and more than that, because we had 2,020 were electronic, and that was all middle school and high school.
Students.
Students and teachers at that level if they wanted to take it.
And how many teachers do we have that voted on that? Is it teachers, administrators?
It was anyone that worked in our schools.
So what I'm getting at is like, over a thousand students voted on this.
Oh, yeah, this is clearly says that everybody didn't do it. That is, they, it was sent to them. They pulled it up that morning, but we didn't have to take it if they didn't want to. They were, it was sent to them. They pulled it up that morning, but they didn't have to take it if they didn't want to.
I just felt it was very odd that we asked middle school students when they wanted to go to school and not their parents. I mean, we don't ask them, should we have cell phones and, you know?
But remember the story also went home to parents too.
It did. But we really, we counted two of my children's votes and none of mine. So, just saying. So that information of how it was obtained was a little bit curious. I, I think there's more information that needs to be gained. We have a lot of you bringing really good points tonight. I think that's really important. I think that improving the kids' scores, their whole academic success, their personal success at school is important. I am for the later start time. I'm not so much for the elementary school starting earlier. And I think that's quite the, the plan to complete. When we brought to light the whole bus driver situation, I think that's one of the bigger problems that we have. I think the, I was here at the school board meeting when this thing was initially brought up and it seemed like it might have gone through a little quicker, easier if we did have the ability to just go ahead and switch it. If we had those resources, if we had the bus drivers, it would have, you know, kind of probably slid right under a little without that stand, standoff. But we don't have the resources right now to do this and that's what we need to find, is the resources. And of course, we're always looking at ways to improve rush students and I think that's important. I think this is great. And I'm very impressed that this many people came out here today. This is more than I've seen at the school board meeting recently. So thank you all for being here.
We would love to start school like we did before. Ms. Blake said that, you know, at one point in time, basically all of our students started between eight, eight-fifteen and then out between three-fifteen and three-thirty. That would be fantastic. But with, as you heard, our bus fleet is down so much and the numbers that I was given today, they do not include, I think we probably have about five that'll retire this year. So that isn't even included in this. But we're having a recruitment fair for bus drivers and cafeteria workers and other people on the twenty-second of June. So we are trying to see what we can do to get more bus drivers to kind of help us with this situation. However, we know it's not gonna go away overnight. It's gonna take a while because we've got to build that bus fleet back up again. So, thank you for that.
Betty Harmon.
Hi, I'm Betty Harmon. I'm a middle school teacher. I'm not really up here, but I do appreciate what the research says. And really, if probably in an ideal situation, it would be better if they came later. But if we have to look at who's better to come later, I don't think elementary students need to be sitting out early. If we talk about research, I haven't researched this, but I'm willing to bet that research could show that students need to be in class. And with athletic events, academic challenge, from before COVID, our students were missing four o'clock. Now they don't have to, which is huge. One thing that, the only other thing I'm gonna add to everybody's setup I was gonna say, but a couple of weeks ago, we had a three-hour delay. The students who were tardy at seven-thirty were still tardy at ten-thirty. And the students who wanted to put their heads down on a three-hour, on a regular day, wanted to put their heads down on a three-hour delay. They got three extra, they were offered three extra hours of sleep. They were the same ones that rolled in late. They were just still tardy, still wanted to put their heads down. Ideally, I'd love to not go to work until eight o'clock. Seven o'clock was a six fifty, six fifty was a huge adjustment for the teachers. It was not an easy adjustment. I don't know, what, four years? We were finally halfway adjusted. We're not away when we get there. But, you know, we get up and go to work and the kid's job is to come to school. And they do really well, to be honest with you. And the ones who are tired, don't tell them, Ms. Harmon, I was on a group chat till two this morning. Well, if we go at eight-thirty, they're still gonna be tired. So ideally, I'd love to see them come at eight-thirty, but with the bus situation, this year we couldn't. We had after-school, but we had no buses because they were still running the elementary schools, which was fine. So if our kids wanted to save after-school, they had to have their own transportation, which I don't know the numbers on this, but I would, just from what I've seen, I would say that more elementary students take advantage of after-school. I don't know that for sure. I'm just, from what I see, those students would be able to have after-school unless something changed. So I'm not gonna repeat what everybody else said, but that's it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, for coming this. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to point out that were pointed out to me by a few parents. They really didn't have a problem with the switching of the start times. What they would have a problem with is for elementary, if they were gonna start earlier, even though seven-thirty was a bit of a stretch, they would like to see after-school programs, which you just touched on just a few minutes ago. We did have that once upon a time, but they do not have that now. They don't have it all early. They would like to have that. Another thing that just came to my attention when I saw Robbie over here. We used to have a lot of teachers that were bus drivers. And I guess they've all retired maybe? I don't know. When I was at the school, we had a lot of them. Yeah, Robbie started recruiting. Can't you compliment it anymore? Or is it because of the stagger times, maybe? They don't, they can't do it as much?
We still have some teachers and staff members that are bus drivers. And in fact, about a month ago, after all this started, we set out a new recruiting thing for teachers, just like we did when Robbie and them came on board, for teachers that, if you're a teacher, and we will train you, you know, we will work everything around your space and your schedule. So we haven't had a lot of that yet, but, you know, we are still.
We haven't gotten to that like drag and screaming and kicking or whatever. I mean, come on now, come on Betty. Go ahead. I mean, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't really be, you know, ideal because especially if they drove during school, you know? And then we have athletic pros and things like that. That would be, that would be something we could really focus on and we could get more of them. Credit Robin on bus or something like that. But, you know, that, that was just a couple of things that was pointing out to me since we've been talking about this. The after-school programs was a big deal and, you know, of course, ideally, we would like to have everything started at the same time. Eight o'clock, eight-thirty would be really good, you know, that would be ideal. So I just wanted to point that out.
And I would say that, you know, people aren't listening and we're trying to work out things where, you know, after-school is a big deal with us for having drivers. Because of course, if a driver drives a high school or a middle school after-school activity, then that means you've got to double up or do something else to get the elementary kids at home. So, you know, we do have, as recently as today, one of our board members decided, okay, I will drive volunteer. And of course, we can't do it for pay, but volunteer so that kids won't have to miss out on some after-school field trips, which take away drivers, or some after-school runs and things like that. So that's good, you know, if we have people that we can, we'll train you. Come, we'll train you to help us out and yes. Okay, Robbie, cheers.
So I really like the plan of speaking. I've already spoken. And, but you're talking into the bank. Anyway, thank you for your information at the beginning because it was some good points that I didn't know about on the pros. You know, because I've been against it from the start just because of I know what the elementary school will lose. Thirty-one years ago, I started with Dr. Hall at K TAN. I started driving thirty-one years ago. I started teaching thirty-one years ago. I've been driving ever since. I've been teaching ever since. And.
You're the man.
It, I, I remember when school started at eight, got out of three, just like she said. That's how it was when I went to school. That's how it was with my kids when they went to school. I do remember that I was a, well, I don't know if I was a great parent, but I was pretty stern. And I did, Verizon has killed our schools, you know, phones are tough. But one thing you can do as parents that I learned, my wife showed me a long time ago, that we could cut our kids' data off. So, you know, my kids are eight, nine, tenth grade. Eight o'clock, their data shut off. They could do nothing but make a non-home phone call. And I turned it back on at seven AM the next morning. My kids sit up till two, three, TikTok and then doing all this crap. And the kids tell seven to ten, while they're up all night, they're sleeping in class. Dude, come on, Adam, come on, man. You gotta wake up. You gotta wake up. I'm tired, I stayed up all, TikTok and another Instagram all night. That's not my fault. Your parents should have gotten me off of it. Not me. Don't make me suffer the next day in school because your parents didn't take that piece of hardware from you. But, you know, as parents, you can, you can cut that, that data off. The internet stops. And you can turn it off and you can turn it on whenever you want. That saved my life because my kids were tough. And, you know, it saved me. I didn't take more of my kids to graduate, but I did, only because we figured that out. Here's what it is. I believe in public schools. I don't believe in private schools. All three of my kids graduated. One's in her fifth year of med school. And the other two, her year on the shore, they have great jobs. And I have not given up on bus driving. I do wish it could be like it used to be. All the schools went to school at the same time. That is ideal and I wish it could go back to it. Do you know, bus driver pays not the best. We get better pay. We may get a few more, but it's not gonna solve everything. One of the things is we gotta work on discipline on the buses. You know, most of our drivers are retired bus drivers or retired people from our community. And at sixty-plus years old and seventy years old, they don't wanna get cussed out on a daily basis by kids or be treated unprepared. There are some things we could do as a school system or as a community that could probably give us a lot more drivers. And I do think that times do matter, but, you know, not as late as what it was projected. And I, I do wish that we could get more drivers and I do think that's the reason for our struggle is our bus drivers. As you see, we need school teachers too. As Rick used to say, you know, we're the first ones to see them in the morning and we're the last ones to see them in the evening. And we make a big impression. We should do our best that we can do. Always say good morning and good evening. And I still say it to every kid every day on my bus. I don't wanna take off three or four days a year. I'm there every day. And even when I take off from school, I drop that bus no matter what because I know we don't have any drivers. So I just want you to know that it, I think if we could just work harder, there's ways we could maybe get more drivers. And if we could get more drivers, then we could work on the times. But I don't want us to make a jump into trying to change times. Then there's other avenues we could work on first. And then if all else fails, yes, let's work on changing times. All right, thank you so much.
Good evening. Gwen Horns.
Somebody get your cutoffs.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am a school bus driver. I have been driving for McMath County since 2017. I drove before COVID, during COVID, and after COVID. These children that are hitting on our buses need our help, their parents' help, and our school's help because they are struggling. They don't wanna admit it. But any of us who have struggled to get through school will know, when you see that face of that kid, they're not making it. There's a lot of things that might, could, possibly fix all of this. I honestly don't believe changing our times right now is gonna be a good thing. When you look at the schools, as all of us do when we're sitting at those, in those buses full of kids, our buses are not as full in the morning as they are in the afternoon because your parents are having to take your kids to school because they don't wanna get up. All of us can look on our buses and say, twenty-three, afternoon, four A two. Because they don't wanna get up. We can only give them as much as we can. The parents have got to help us more. They've got to be able to understand we only have them for a small period of time. And that small period of time is when we can help them and they listen to us and they want to listen to us. Because there's gonna be a point where it's like, whatever. Because all of us that are bus drivers see that every single solitary day. The kid that comes on the bus and you say something to him and they're like, whatever. And we can't do anything about it. And not our kids. I wasn't gonna do this, but I'm the bus driver that the article was written about. I lost my control, my frustration, my patience. And I'm embarrassed by it because I'm an adult. But you wanna ride these buses and you wanna make these kids better? Work with them. Don't send us kids that are angry because they don't understand something that's going on. We get them and we smile and we talk. And we try to encourage them. My priority, which I've been told is a little bit off. I want my kids and they are my kids. When they step on my bus, they're my kids. You put them on the bus, I take them for that forty-minute drive. I listen to them. I watch the traffic. I watch the weather. I watch the cuss word person that runs through my lane because they're in a hurry. But they are my priority. They come first. You don't mess with my kids. You don't mess with them on my bus. I don't allow them to take out their anger or their frustrations on each other. I want them to succeed when they get on that bus because when they go into the school, they've got a period of time that they're learning. And if we don't get them there, it's not gonna make any difference because they aren't going to listen if we don't get them there. When those parents drop off the kids in the morning, and I apologize because I know how hard it is. I've got five girls, five high-maintenance girls who have to get up very early in the morning to do the hair, do the makeup, do the shaving, did the shower, did the, anyway. Anybody who has a girl, I apologize. You never want to talk about it. But we have to get them there. And we have to get them there with open minds. Because when they get into the school, there are periods that they only have. And when they don't have those periods and they're thinking about something else, they're losing and we lose them. And you get kids on the bus that are angry. And they're, and I apologize if it's a curse word, pissed off with their parents or their brother or their dog or whatever else happened in the morning. And we have to try and get them to straighten up and fly right. Because if they don't, they're losing and we lose them. They're our responsibility. Because that's my kid. And I don't think that making the time changes is gonna, it's gonna make it any better or worse right now. We, we, we got bigger problems to deal with people. And, and these kids just want our attention. When you pick up the little kids in the morning, and they're standing there with their parents because they have to stand there with their parents or somebody every single solitary day to get picked up. And when they get dropped off, and you see the parents standing there, and that kid is strangled to death. That's that window. And that's what we have there. We just have windows. And if we don't take advantage of those windows, we're gonna lose them before we even get them on the bus. I don't think the time change is gonna make the difference. I think it starts here. I think it starts at home. I think it starts with communication, which none of us enjoy. It's uncomfortable. But we have to, because we're losing them. Look at them. They're angry. They're sad. We have to try harder. I know I do. Because it's easy to be frustrated and pissed off and angry at the world. But we're adults, and these kids need it. They don't need that. They need to be, they need to have hope. Sorry if I went off into the blue yonder.
You're breaking up the rear.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Simpson-Donaway. Um, my mother taught at Acton County School System for thirty-one years. My sister is on the year twenty. I have had a child in this county school system, at least one, because I also have five girls, for twenty-eight years. My oldest child is thirty-three, my youngest is twelve, I have three in the middle. So for thirty, for twenty-eight years, I have had a child in this school system. So the reason that I wanted to go last is because I wanted to kinda feel out what everybody else's concerns were, what everyone else was talking about. So I wanna start, and I'm not trying to be any kind of way when I say this, but legitimately, oh, and I'm in my senior year in Bachelor of Arts or Bachelor of Science in Psychology. I have a degree in English from Northwestern. I was also a critical care paramedic for twenty years and was medically retired from the county of Acton Mac um, in two thousand twenty. So, um, number one, for me personally, and like I say, I have five girls, they range in age from thirty-three to twelve. It is, it's not a child's job, nor the responsibility to provide childcare for younger students. Plain and simple. That is not their job. That job falls on the parents. Um, I believe that is putting entirely too much pressure on children on a daily basis when you know that, and I know there's a lot of families out there, that their parents, they work early, so their older siblings have to get the younger siblings ready to go to school, they have to brush their hair, they have to get them dressed, make sure they brush their teeth and wash their face, and get them on the school bus. And then in the afternoons, the parents aren't home yet, so they have to get the kids off of the bus, and they have to make sure to get their homework done and whatever else they need to do. That's not that child's responsibility. Um, and I'm sorry if I offend anyone by saying that, I truly do, not really. But my thing is, there is childcare out there for a reason. There are plenty of places that you can take your child, there are neighbors, family members, adults. So that children can be children, and that's from the age of birth until the age of eighteen. A brain, a human brain does not fully develop until the age of twenty-five. So when you're leaving small, younger children in the care of someone who is fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, their brains aren't prepared for that. What if an emergency happens? And they freeze? What's gonna happen then? You know, there's, there's no responsible adult around that's going to be able to take care of business. So from the paramedic in me, I think it's dangerous. From the mental health provider in me, I think it's unfair. So that, that was the first thing that I wanted to address. The second thing, when we talk about blue light, blue light is just one of seven different lights that is emitted from the sun. Um, there are a lot of things you can do to combat blue light. Number one is dim your computer display. Another one is dim your cellphone display. Um, you can buy blue light glasses for like twenty bucks on Amazon. Uh, replace any of your incandescent bulbs with ones that don't emit blue light. And also in two thousand twenty-four, there was a study done that was published in the Medical News Today. And the researchers in that group found that blue light from the sun is vital in regulating a person's sleep-wake cycle. It does not affect a person's internal clock. Whereas previous studies had shown that blue light from devices can damage the eyes and negatively impact sleep. So when we talk about research, um, I heard somebody mention, you know, statistics are statistics and our children are children. Well, there's a few things about research. When you're doing a research project, there are two things that are very critical to a research project whenever you start doing one. One of those is that research project must be valid. What validity is, is how will a study measure what it means to measure? If I set out to do a study to measure whatever, does my study provide me with that measurement? If it does not, then it's not valid. And this is also used when you, um, create tests, like SOLs and standardized testings and stuff like that. They also have to be valid and reliable. As far as reliability goes, can the research that you have come up with be consistently reproduced? And if it cannot, then it is not peer-reviewed and it is not published, plain and simple. So every research article that is peer-reviewed in a professional journal has been repeated multiple times to the point of, yes, this is valid. Yes, this is reliable, these numbers are correct. Um, and without these, the study cannot be consistently reproduced. Um, Education Weekly did up a meta-analysis, which is when they take a bunch of papers, a bunch of research journals, um, and they put them all together, and they come up with a set of results. Instead of, and it could have twenty different papers, it could have forty different papers, but it's called a meta-analysis. So from numerous studies, elementary-age children do their best in math and reading early in the morning. Math and English are two of the major foundations of school. I mean, everything you learn in school in those two classes from kindergarten forward builds on the year before and what you've learned. So if elementary kids learn better in the morning, then they would be better suited to go to school earlier in the morning. Um, my mother used to say, this is, this is, uh, like I said, my mom taught thirty-one years, she taught home economics, so she got all the students that they couldn't find anywhere else to place them. I mean, let's face it, that, that's what home ec was in high school. I don't know if it's still like that today, but back then, if they couldn't find the correct place to put a child, let's go to Ms. Simpson's home ec class. So my mother had a very, very tight relationship with her students. And she would always tell me, we have them for eight hours and we cannot, we cannot replace the sixteen hours that we don't have them. And that stuck with me through my entire life, and it made so much sense, um, it just made sense. So currently, I only have one child in school, thank goodness. Um, she is twelve, and she is in seventh grade at Arcadia Middle School. Lucky us, we live about a mile from the bus driver. She gets picked up when she was riding the bus at five fifty AM. Five fifty. School starts at seven thirty. And they picked her up at five fifty. They get out of school at two twenty-three. She did not be home until four fifteen. That is eleven hours that my child spent from the time she left home until the time she got back home. That's ludicrous. That's ludicrous. No one, I mean, I worked twenty-four-hour shifts, I'm grown. No child should have me on a bus and in school for eleven hours. Um, fifth thing, and Robbie touched on this a little bit, about parental controls. There are, every device comes with parental controls. All of them. You can set it to turn off at a certain time, you can set it to turn on at a certain time. If nothing else, you can turn your router off. It's that simple. Click a button, guess what? Oh, you're not playing that game anymore, sorry. Um, another thing, tell your child at X time, bring all of your electronics to me. My daughter, at nine o'clock, knows that at nine o'clock, she brings me her cellphone and her laptop. That's the deal. That's the deal. She does not have a television in her bedroom, and there's a reason for that. Because she's not gonna be watching TV online. She's not gonna be on YouTube. She's not gonna be checking out things on Minecraft games. She's gonna be in the bed asleep. So that's just a few, you know, suggestions. And I just, like I said, I just took those notes when, when I first got here, and that's why I wanted to go last. But this right here is, um, if there's anything that I can do well, it is research. And I have numerous articles here from everybody, from, oh my gosh, from sleep studies. So one thing says, experts believe that teens need between eight and ten hours of sleep every night. It's already addressed with that. It's already been rolled up during this town hall meeting. Um, but did you know that sixty percent of middle schoolers and seventy percent of high schoolers are not getting anywhere near that amount? Nowhere near. Um, insufficient sleep can translate into poor academic performance. It can increase the risk of long-term health problems such as obesity, diabetes, and my heart, mental health issues. Mental health issues is my first love. My very first love. Um, I have been through mental health issues myself. I have had family members having issues. I have friends galore that have issues. And if any of you are friends with me on Facebook, you will see that I talk a lot about mental health. I put it all out there, I am raw. And that's the way that I operate, because if it's anything, I'm real, I'm raw. I'm not fake. I don't put on airs, and I will tell you the God's honest truth. I will tell you when I'm having a bad day, and I'll tell you why. I'll tell you when I'm having a good day, and I'll tell you why. Mental health in children, school-aged children, has plummeted. Um, they're just not, they're not well since COVID. They were kinda on the brink before COVID, but COVID put these kids over the edge. It really did. Um, early school start times may be part of the problem. Evidence shows that starting school later increases a teenager's sleep time and improves the safety and academic performance. And expert groups support later start times for middle schools and high schools in the United States. According to recent data, the average public high school in the United States starts at eight AM. That is the average. In two thousand fourteen, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommended that middle school and high schools should start at eight thirty AM at the earliest. Policy can be slow to reflect changes in public health recommendations, but some state legislatures are beginning to actually listen to medical experts. In two thousand nineteen, California passed a bill to ensure that first-period classes would start no earlier than eight thirty AM for all high school students and eight AM for middle school students. So when we talk about the impact on students, we're not talking about parents, we're not talking about adults. We're talking about the students themselves, because that is what's important, the students. That's why we're all here. That's why we have school system. If they weren't important, we wouldn't have school system. We wouldn't be here right now, which would be like, whatever, well and well. So children and teenagers need more sleep than adults, proven fact. Um, modern life places many demands on school-aged kids that can cut into your sleep time, such as daily homework, assignments, sports, other extracurricular activities, part-time jobs, social obligations. And on top of these demands, early school start times contribute to higher rates of sleep loss among pre-teens and teens. Sleep loss can have a wide range of effects for young people, both inside and outside of school. When it comes to school performance, requiring students to start class early in the morning while running on a sleep, sleep debt can hurt their academic performance. Regularly losing sleep impairs students' memory, organizational skills, and ability to manage complex tasks, all of which are crucial for learning. Moreover, sleep loss makes students tired. In one poll, three in ten students reported falling asleep at school once a week or more. Three in ten, that's a third. A third of students reported that, yeah, they fell asleep in class. Um, chronic sleep loss can also lead to trouble paying attention, staying focused. They lose creativity. They lose the ability to think abstractly, which is very important. Um, they get poor grades, there is a higher dropout rate, and there is lower attendance rates. There is also increased sensitivity to stress, a reduced impulse control, that's part of that whole anger thing. Impulse control, kids don't have it, and difficulty interpreting social clues. Outside of school, this just goes beyond grades. It's not just poor quality and insufficient sleep that's linked to a wide array of health consequences, behavioral issues, and mental health risks. Also, chronic disorders, not getting enough sleep on a regular basis contributes to obesity. Has anybody checked the, like, obesity rates for children in the United States lately? It's about seventy-nine percent. That's crazy. That's crazy. Um, high cholesterol, type-two diabetes, high blood pressure. Think about that for a minute. A middle school or high school student with hypertension? That was unheard of years ago. Mental health issues, chronic sleep loss in adolescents can increase the risk of depression and anxiety. And that makes it much harder to regulate emotions. I don't know if anybody's noticed it, but my child tells me about it all the time. There's certainly been an uptick over the past few years since COVID, a number of fights that occur in the middle school. I don't know about the high schools, I don't have anybody there, but it seems like every time you turn around, there's a fight in our community in middle school. And it's been since COVID. Um, once you turn sixteen, driving accidents. Drowsy driving is a major risk for drivers of all ages. And sleep deprived teens are more likely to get into a collision or a traffic accident. Um, a lot of adolescents who don't get enough sleep are more likely to overuse caffeine, like Monsters, energy drinks, all that stuff. We all see the kids out there drinking Red Bulls. There's a reason. And they also may be prone to undertaking risky practices such as alcohol and tobacco use, drug abuse, unsafe driving, high-risk sexual activity, and hostile behavior. So a lot of the major health organizations such as the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, National Sleep Foundation, the American Psychology Foundation, the American Pediatric Association, all of them recommend that middle and high schools start later in the morning. You know, when I was getting ready for this, I did, I've been working on this for like a week now. There's not a lot of studies out there at the elementary level. There's not a lot of studies out there at the elementary level. And I looked, believe me. I dug. And most of what I found was about high school and middle school. But there is a consensus among health experts that school start times, it's gotta be later for high school and middle school. Current early sleep start times can especially be detrimental to teenagers because of their unique sleep-wake cycle of adolescence. So as children enter puberty, their internal sleep clock, their whole circadian rhythm, begins to shift. And it's because of hormones. Once that shift occurs, they have a tendency to fall asleep later in the evening. And it's not their fault. It's hormones. It's their circadian cycle that is getting reset. So early school schedules prevent pre-teens and teens from waking up later to make up their later bedtimes. Shifting start times later in the morning can help correct this sleep deficit and can convey other benefits as well. Some of the benefits, increased waking, ah, excuse me, sorry. Better class attendance, reduce extortiveness, they get higher grades. They stay awake in class, less drowsy while doing homework. There are fewer car accidents. They wake up earlier on the weekends, actually. They don't sleep until one or two o'clock in the afternoon because of their sleep debt, the five days a week they're going to school. They also have a decrease in depression symptoms. The drawbacks, there are some. Conflicting schedules for parents working traditional nine-to-five jobs. Early school start times feed neatly into their workday schedule. And then the later start times may make it more difficult for parents and kids to coordinate their morning schedules. Transportation logistics, lack of bus drivers. You know, that, that's a big issue here. And less time after school. So if you start later, of course, you're going to get out of school later. And with school ending later, students may have less time for other activities on weekdays. So it's just more for if they get touring after school, if they play sports or have part-time jobs, spending time with their friends, or any hobbies. So like I say, I have a whole stack. I could go, I could stand up here and go, oh, just man.
May I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
First of all, I want to say thank you.
Certainly.
You're so well-read, thank you. I am a school board member.
Hey, oh, nice to meet you.
Frame Lisa Johnson's name.
Nice to meet you, Lisa Johnson.
So how do the student demographics of the research?
Wonderful question.
I haven't finished it.
I know where you're going.
What one am I going to say?
I'm going to say.
No.
You're going to ask about the demographics. You're going to ask if there's a difference between male and female or socio-economic or...
Not at all.
Okay.
I would like to know, how do the demographics of the students in the research that you're referring to compare to the demographics of Acapulco?
Okay. That's a good question. Because the demographics, that's the fact. When they did these studies, they made sure, and I've got to hear something. It'll be three seconds. There's one particular one that I'm looking for. Usually when they do these, they try to make sure that there is a good ratio among, like, male and female. Let's see. This one's on obesity. Okay, here we are. Demographic characteristics. So this particular study, this was, this one is on obesity. We were talking about obesity earlier. So children ages eleven to seventeen, forty-five percent are considered obese. Now, that's not concluding just that overweight because there are different weight classes. There's normal weight. There's overweight. Obesity means that you have a BMI over, I believe obesity is thirty. Ken, is that correct? I think it's thirty. I think the BMI is thirty, classified as obese. So forty-five percent of children ages eleven to seventeen are classified as obese. So the demographic characteristics of this included sex, race and ethnicity, non-Hispanic white, non-Hispanic black, Hispanic and others. It was ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. So this particular study was eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight students that were white, five thousand, one hundred and fourteen students that were black, seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six Hispanics, and two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven marked as other. Thirteen thousand, five hundred were female. Thirteen thousand, three hundred were male. And then for each of the grades, it was about the same number between sixty-four and sixty-six hundred. So I would say, if that's what your question is. If not, I can, I can give you just the numbers. And like I say, I could say I'm going to go on about this all night long, but take up any other point.
I'm familiar with that study that you did. And VCU just conducted an entire study surrounding some of the similar things because of the research. However, I think what Dr. Johnson was saying...
I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson. I'm sorry. I apologize. No, no, no. I, no, no.
I think what she was alluding to is that when you're looking at the demographics, you're looking at the area and lots of people. You may have to be thinking about it. It was the area. And as we have stated, you know, we realize there's problems. We are addressing. We will try and continue to address the issue. However, the fact here is that on the northern end of the county, there is very, very low childcare. Almost none. It's very important to have support from their siblings on that end of the county. Also, the other thing is, when you're looking at research studies, and I have, we have a lot of school divisions who have conducted similar studies. And I'm a researcher, so I like to do a lot of research also. The bus issue here that we have is a major problem.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And I realize that. I realize that.
Getting them there. And so we're aware of that. We respect the research. We respect everything that everyone's saying. However, we have to do that. We have to.
And I understand that completely. And I wish that there was a way, I don't know, like in Orshur County, everyone owns their own bus, they're contracted. That might be an option for Acapulco County. Just saying. Up in the pay would be a thing, you know? That's a county administrator thing. That's not, you know? So there's a lot of things that play here, and I understand that. But I just wanted everyone to know the facts. And I really, I didn't even get into the mental health side of things. But if you, if you research the mental health side of children's start times, you will see the numbers. And Dr. Johnson, I'm so...
Thank you. Is there anything about lack of sleep? Yes, Ms. Johnson.
Like the bus driver, I'm sorry to call you bus driver. I don't remember your name. But the bus driver said, like, they're all our kids. And I had sent Raj to college last year. And when he's applying, you're trying to put everything on that application you have. If we get out late, we're not going to have coaches. They're not going to be on school team. They're not going to be on baseball team. They're not going to do forensic because people, teachers are not going to stay there till six o'clock to get home to, to their families. I'm not coached, so, but I've heard multiple coaches say, yeah, if we got out at three o'clock, three-thirty, yes. But if we keep pushing it, they're not staying. And I know we, sometimes we have outside people come in. They don't know the kids. It's not, it's just not the same. But they're not, they're not going to coach. They're not going to sponsor clubs. They're, they're not going to do it. And we've got, all we can do on our plate right now, and they're not going to stay till five, five-thirty. And our kids are, that was the first thing my son, when he went to school, he's like, Mom, these kids have associates. These kids, all these kids have associates. All these kids were at this club and that, and they took this class and that. We don't have that here. So what little we have, we've got to keep. Or our kids cannot compete. And I know that the most important thing is what happens during the school day. But that's not all colleges look at. And I know that our friends go to college. I know that. But that's, a lot of them are. And they are looking more at not just, did they get an A or a B? What else did they do? Did they have a job? Did they play this sport? Did they participate in this? And they want to see a wide variety. And a lot of teachers aren't going to coach them because they're not getting rich doing it. So.
But the comment about mental health is important. But that is not, sleep is not the only thing that affects them.
Right.
Sleep is not the only thing that affects obesity. For one, we went away from things that we used to. I'm not quite sure why. Might be that we're trying to squeeze in certain periods in school. But at the elementary school, I think they do have recess. And in middle school, they may have gym, but unlimited, I don't know. I think at the high school, ninth grade, the gym is required, but other years is not. When you factor in the foods that we eat now, and we're not getting the exercise that we used to. That's one thing you are getting on. A lot of people are angry and frustrated, like the gentleman said. Some things that they are exposed to, that parents could step in and take away. Some things, you never know what a child is going through at home in their environment, in their community. It could be a fight going on down the street. It'd be their parents are fighting. It could be any number of things that take away, that stress them, that worry them, that make them where they cannot get their rest. It doesn't always have to be that you can, I feel, and I'm not a doctor. I do hold degrees. They're not in psychology. I do have a master's. I do have a bachelor's. I do have an associate's. And I did have to take psychology classes, but I don't claim to be a psychologist. I would say this. I don't feel that if you change the school plan, that the children that have these other issues, that that's going to change it. And I know because I was a child brought up in environments just like some of the ones I mentioned. And it had to be the person or people in the community to step up and make a difference in their child's life. So change the system plan, it's not going to change that person.
Well, Bill Johnson, we can talk. I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I appreciate your input. Does anyone other than John have anything? Thank you very much. I hope you can do your own health, safe trip.